The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 regular city council meeting of March 22, 2023. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
I am here.
Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Cor.
Think you need to turn your mic on? Is your mic on?
Oh.
Okay, there you go.
Here, thank you.
In keeping with council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on this afternoon's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are also given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on this afternoon's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on this afternoon's agenda?
Mayor Go, we have not received any speaker cards for items listed on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we also have not received any speaker cards for items not listed on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Closed session item 4A, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation for the following four matters. One, Vernal Leota Evans versus City of Bakersfield at L. Two, North Kern Water Storage District versus City of Bakersfield. Three, in the matter of Kern River applications of North Kern Water Storage District and City of Shafter at L. And four, bring back the Kern Water Audit California at L versus City of Bakersfield at L.
Vice Mayor.
Motion to adjourn to closed session.
We adjourn to closed session. Reconvening the 3:30 city council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. There were several items on closed session tonight. On item 4A, one, by unanimous vote, the city attorney was given direction. On items 4A, 2, 3, and 4 were all heard at the same time, and there was a unanimous vote giving staff direction. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we stand adjourned at 5:01. We'll start the next meeting at 5:15.
Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the county of Kern, and the city of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 10:00 a.m., and the following Wednesday at 7:00 p.m. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular city council meeting of March 22, 2023. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you. Welcome to all of you. I'm going to have to ask the two of you who are standing back there to either find a seat or go outside for fire regulations. Are there any seats left? Would you raise your hand if there's a seat next to you? Okay, there's one seat right over here. And any other seats? There's one seat right over here. David, right there. We have the pleasure tonight of having Rabbi Jonathan Klein from Temple Beth El synagogue offer the invocation. It was such a joy to celebrate the 75th, that 75th anniversary of Temple Beth El. They've been doing so much, so much good work. It was great, Rabbi, to see the excitement of people embrace you during your installation. The rabbi was just recently installed, I think it was the night before that we celebrated the wonderful 75th anniversary. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And then following the invocation, Frontier's academic decathlon team will lead us in the pledge. So along with Centennial High School, Frontier is going to represent Bakersfield and the California State Academic Decathlon Competition, which is going to take place this weekend, hope you're prepared, in Santa Clara. They earned first place at the 2023 Kern County Academic Decathlon Super Quiz Competition and second place overall at the team standings. And along with the team, we have their teacher, Janie Quan. It's such a pleasure to have this group with us. And so the rabbi, you can go ahead and offer some remarks.
Sure.
Lead the pledge, lead the invocation, and then we'll have the next group. But would you all please stand?
Thank you. I'm very happy to have academic decathlon here. I did that in 1986. It's been a few moons. Well, I'm honored to be able to join you today and engage in my civic duty to build a more just and sacred Bakersfield. As the eighth rabbi of Temple Beth El and relatively new to the community, I thank you, Mayor Go, and your warm welcome, and this body, this wonderful body of council members, and Bakersfield as a whole, for doing what you can to bring health, wholeness, and holiness into the daily lives of all. The Jewish community of Bakersfield is part of the beautiful mosaic of communities that call this city home. I cannot be happier to see the rich diversity of representation in this body ethnically and in terms of gender as well. Jews have a long history here as builders of Bakersfield, and we will continue to construct a better Bakersfield together with you. So let us offer some prayer. Master of the universe, known by many names, Adonai, Allah, the Anointed One, Bhagavan, Mother Earth, Waha Guru, God of my ancestors, God of this city council, Mayor Go, and our predecessors, God of compassion and mercy, God of justice, Rebono Shalom, the master of the world, we gather today as we have for years, busying ourselves with the betterment of all, to make Bakersfield more prosperous, just, beautiful, equitable, affordable, and thus more just and more fair for all, a fulfillment of the American dream. Ours is to live out the words of Israel's prophets, the fixers of the ancient Near East, such as Isaiah, who taught us to be repairers of the breach, restorers of streets to live in. Through our actions, we can fulfill Amos's vision, that we will let justice roll down like waters, righteousness like a mighty stream, or the prophet Jeremiah's reminder to imagine peace, peace, even when there is no peace. Together, may we innovate, imagine, use our intellect to devise an oasis that drives ingenuity. May we never let fear overwhelm us or embody a scarcity model that results in inequities, a greed that closes our eyes to the downtrodden, the countless homeless that are also a part of our community. God, strengthen us to focus our energies on those struggling, those shut in their homes, the poor, the elderly, the indigent, those whose healthcare is insufficient, those struggling with inner demons that serve as undertows to their well-being. Help us to find a fair and equitable solution for these city workers who have joined us here today, recognizing that they too are created, bidzalim Elohim, in the divine image. And let us be, as Jewish sources teach our ways, ones that lift up the fallen, heal the sick, free the captive, and keep faith with those who sleep in the dust. Vitah herli benu le ovdechab emet, purify our hearts to serve you in truth. We say this in your name, and we say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Rabbi. Frontier?
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. And I'd like to invite Ms. Quan, if you'd like to offer a few words, and then a representative from the decathlon team. The representative? Okay, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Gia Patel, and I'm from Frontier's Academic Decathlon Team. Our team is comprised of 11 amazing students and two fantastic coaches, and we are honored to be able to be one of the teams to represent Bakersfield at this week's state competition, along with having this opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and congratulations to all of you. And then I'm going to embarrass Olivia, whose grandma is here, who won five gold, three bronze, and one team silver in the local competition. So congratulations to all of you. We're just so proud of you. Thank you very much. And then we look forward to celebrating you when you come back from state. So you are welcome to continue joining us for the rest of this meeting, or if you need to go and study so that you can win more achievements, you're welcome to leave at this time. Thank you also, Rabbi. And thank you, congratulations on being selected by your congregation, 75 years. Congratulations to Temple Beth El.
Thank you very much.
There are a few more seats, about maybe five that have opened up. So if somebody in the lobby, I know we have a lot of people standing out there, if you can come on in, you're welcome to do so right now. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos, and for safety reasons. And as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the city council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the city council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance, that conduct that disrupts the meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, going off topic, shouting, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, the next item, please.
Presentations, item 4A, proclamation to Jeffrey Gutierrez, president of DeWalt Corporation, declaring National Surveyors Week in Bakersfield during the week of March 22, 2023.
Welcome, Mr. DeWalt. Good to see you. Oh, you others. Colleagues, since the colonial days of the United States, surveyors have been leaders in the community, shaping cultural standards. Former notable surveyors include George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, Abraham Lincoln, William Clark, along with our very own Ward Four Councilmember Bob Smith. The city uses 12 firms for our surveying and mapping needs, and now it's my honor to be able to issue this proclamation. Whereas surveyors play an integral role in land development, from planning to design of a building site, and whereas there are over 46,000 licensed surveyors in the United States, close to 4,000 licensed land surveyors serving 40 million residents in the state of California, and 58 licensed land surveyors in the city of Bakersfield. And whereas surveying has been an essential element in the development of the human environment since the beginning of recorded history, and is required in the planning and execution of nearly every form of construction. And whereas many services are now provided using sophisticated surveying equipment and techniques, including satellite-born remote sensing devices, and automated positioning, measuring, recording, and plotting equipment. Now therefore, I, Karen Go, mayor of the city of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim March 19 through 25, 2023, as National Surveyors Week in our city, and call on all citizens to recognize and commend surveyors for contributing to the construction and advancement of our community. It's my pleasure to be able to present this to Mr. Gutierrez. Congratulations. Come on up here, and you can introduce your guests, too.
Mayor Go, honorable council members, it's my absolute honor to accept this proclamation. And I hope it's just a coincidence that you're giving it to us on today, which is also National Goofing Off Day. Please note that surveyors, we are hard-working professionals. We very much recognize that there's a finite amount of land in the state of California, and the state has entrusted us with defining and dividing that land. And so I want to introduce a couple of people who are up here with me. These, this is local surveying royalty. Right here is Ron Nelms. Ron is a former president of the state chapter of the California Land Surveyors Association, and Christie here is soon to be president of the California Land Surveyors Association. So again, thank you for this proclamation.
Congratulations. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentation item 4B, proclamation to Noor Kofan, board member of the American Red Cross Kern County and Eastern Sierra Board of Directors, declaring American Red Cross Month in Bakersfield during March 2023.
Ms. Kofan? Well, American Red Cross, thank you so much for your continued efforts to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of so many emergencies. You're always out there mobilizing the power of volunteers and the generosity of donors. We're so grateful for that. It's my honor to be able to present this proclamation. Whereas during American Red Cross Month in March, we celebrate the humanitarian spirit of the city of Bakersfield and reaffirm our commitment to help ensure no one faces a crisis alone. Whereas caring for one another is at the heart of our community and exemplified by the people of Bakersfield, whose simple acts of kindness through the Red Cross provide help and hope in people's most difficult moments. And whereas every day, these ordinary individuals lend a helping hand to make an extraordinary difference for neighbors in need. And whereas their support, volunteerism, and generous donations are critical to our community's resilience, now therefore, I, Karen Go, mayor of the city of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim March 2023 as American Red Cross Month in our city, and encourage all residents to support the mission of the American Red Cross, to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. It's my honor to be able to present this to you, Ms. Kofan. Congratulations, and introduce you.
Thank you. I wasn't prepared to speak, but honorable board members, Mayor Karen Go, thank you. I want to introduce Mitch, who's also a board member and has actually been on the board longer than I have. But I'm very honored to be accepting this on behalf of the Red Cross and honored to be working with such a great board member of volunteers that make all of this possible. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public statements.
Thank you. In keeping with council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on tonight's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. If you are here on public hearing item 9A, now is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when that item is called later in the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. However, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council cannot take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on tonight's agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received one speaker card for items listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speaker is Dennis Fox regarding item 7AA.
Thank you. Come on up, Mr. Fox. Please introduce yourself. Welcome.
Hi, madam mayor, members of the council. I'm Dennis Fox. A couple of years ago, I was in Redding, the other end of our valley, and I...
Can you move closer to the mic, please?
Pardon?
Move closer to the microphone, please, so we can hear you. Just get closer to the mic.
Oh.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Yeah. And I was, a little van pulled up, a regular-sized van, and a police officer was driving it. And he had a bunch of scofflaws with him. It was towing a trailer, and mounted on the trailer was a four-yard garbage dumpster. And they were given the pleasure of cleaning up the messes they were making. And I think that's not only ironic, but cost-effective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Non-agenda item, public statements.
Go ahead and call the first speaker and just let the next one know, so to be ready, please.
Mayor Go, we've, we've received 12 public speaker cards. The first public speaker is Ray Scott, followed by David Malazo, followed by Mario Morales.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Scott.
Good evening, mayor, city council, staff. As always, it is just a pleasure to be able to talk about the beautiful things of Bakersfield. And this, on March 15, TBN, which is Trinity Broadcasting Network, largest, world's largest Christian television station, launched an ebook I wrote two years ago, now is in publication, and, and has been sent out worldwide through TBN. When I was a part of the Centennial Celebration back in 98, I had the privilege of being on several committees, opening up the Centennial Plaza, which is right in front of, of course, the arena. That's also the place where I was able to hold the Gospel Night for eight years for the city of Bakersfield. And know, doing that, it's the heart of Bakersfield. It's where Colonel Thomas Baker's home was. And so it's just appropriate that I be able to hold my first book signing for the city of Bakersfield on Saturday, the 8th, April the 8th, during the Bakersfield Market that's held in the, in the Centennial Plaza. And I just wanted to thank you, thank God, thank Bakersfield for all that it has done for me in my life. It's something that can never be repaid, can never go without saying thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Congratulations. Next speaker, please.
David Malazo, followed by Mario Morales, followed by Rosa Barrera.
Good evening, council.
Welcome.
Thank you so much for having me. My name is David Malazo. I'm the co-founder and CEO of the Bakersfield Marathon, also the Active Bakersfield Alliance. The Active Bakersfield Alliance is a local nonprofit with a three-fold mission. We advocate for healthy, active lifestyles, we raise funds for youth charities, and we champion the city of Bakersfield by inviting the world to visit. And we do that through our Bakersfield Marathon project, and we are coming up on our sixth year of that event. We'd love to invite you to come out and join us at the finish line this Sunday, March 26, where we will have the sixth running of the event. We're welcoming more than 1,600 runners from across the state and from around the country and from around the world, honestly. Participants are hailing this year from 15 states, the District of Columbia, and we even have a few participants coming from their military personnel, military personnel stationed in Europe. So 30% of our participants are coming from outside of the Bakersfield environment. So we're super excited to welcome them and show them all the beautiful things we have to offer here in Bakersfield, California. Hundreds of volunteers will join our board team to produce the race alongside our friends at Bakersfield Police Department, Bakersfield Fire, City Manager's Office, as well as tons of volunteers, city staff, sponsors, vendors, and lastly, spectators. So when we poll those that come and run our race, we ask them, what was your favorite part about running the Bakersfield Marathon? And 100% of them say, the people of Bakersfield come out in droves to celebrate us as we run the streets of the town. That is the number one thing. So what is the most amazing part about the Bakersfield Marathon? Bakersfield. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Malazo. And just a reminder, we are very grateful, and we do want to celebrate you, Mr. Malazo. But just a reminder that applause is not allowed during the rest of the meeting. Vice Mayor, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Malazo, before you go, just want to extend a bit of gratitude to you and to your committee, who, as you pointed out, have been working over six years to produce the marathon. This is an important citywide event and something that I think many, many people, tens of thousands of Bakersfield residents really value and cherish. And I think what needs to be noted is that you put this on, along with your committee members, as volunteers. There is no one who gets paid or compensated for this production. And thank you for the gift that you've given our community in this marathon. It is a Boston qualifying event, which is exciting to have here, and as you pointed out, draws in people from throughout the world. And so it's important that we keep this marathon going. We keep building off of it. And I'd like to make a referral tonight to the city manager, that as we look towards next fiscal year, that we work towards identifying ways, specific ways, that we can support and even sponsor the marathon moving forward. But again, please extend your, our appreciation to your board and all those volunteers who are working hard on the Bakersfield Marathon. And I certainly will be out there, and I won't be running, but I'll be out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malazo, for your leadership. Very much appreciate it. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Mario Malazo, followed by Rosa Barrera, followed by Rosendo Sobranas.
Good evening. Please introduce yourself, Mr. Morales.
Hello, council. My name's Mario Morales. I've been working for the city of Bakersfield now for going on eight years. I'm currently a service maintenance worker at one of the two wastewater plants here, and I'm also a member of my union, SEIU Local 521. I want to comment on how difficult it's been to retain and recruit city workers. This has been an ongoing issue with several departments having shortages and, excuse me, workers and responsibilities split amongst the workers who do. and responsibilities split amongst the workers who do stay. In our Department of Wastewater alone, we've had three electricians leave in the last three years, leaving for better-paying jobs at the county and surrounding municipalities. The position currently remains vacant. That makes three years, which accounts for an investment of several hundred hours of training, lost. Resources that could be used to make the city of Bakersfield run more efficiently, wasted. And that's just in my department. Wastewater is one of the few departments that creates revenue for the city. And several times, we've had haulers that do business with us turn away to Taft or Delano because it was easier than waiting for us to borrow electricians from other plants and departments, if they were available. The city is saving money in wages at the cost of losing revenue. We struggle to retain and hire quality workers because we offer no quality compensation for their work, to our own detriment and to the detriment of the city as a whole. I'd like to remind the council of the partnership between my coworkers and the city during the time of Measure N. The union and employees knocked on doors, phone-banked voters, invested time and energy to help get that measure passed. It has created resources in excess that today keep the city afloat. I believe it's time to recognize the efforts that we have put forward to helping the city flourish in these times and to establish a higher standard that the entire city of Bakersfield deserves. I join my coworkers demanding an answer to our retention crisis with a fair union contract and livable wages. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. Next speaker, please.
Rosa Barrera, followed by Rosendo Sobranas, followed by Maria Aceves.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Rosa Barrera. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I'm an employee of the city of Bakersfield for 15 years at the wastewater treatment plant as the lab technician. I'm also a standing-in union member of the SEIU Local 521. We have the responsibility to protect our environment as well as the public safety, agriculture, animals, and flora. Even during the COVID-19 pandemic crisis, we did not falter or stop our responsibilities as employee of the city of Bakersfield. We know our position requires dedication and safety for our community. In my position, I am required by the state law to ensure the city of Bakersfield meets all the requirements set by the state of board, including the safe water process, treatment from the commercial business, residents, and industries, as well as the other positions where the city of Bakersfield meets their own criteria and their positions. In all these years, I'm sorry, in all my years employed with the city of Bakersfield, I haven't seen dedicated coworkers, employees, and friends leave for better-paying positions for different organizations. In the last council meeting, it aired on the news that the city of Bakersfield was discussing how spend the overage of $90 million per Measure N. It was also announced that the city of Bakersfield would access over $1 million-plus for the Rain Date Fund. While the city of Bakersfield employees struggle with the retaining employees, the most of all, the high cost of living. I'm asking you, the city council, to take the consideration to the employees of the city of Bakersfield in a fair and vice and a proper contract. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Barrera. Next speaker, please.
Rosendo Sobranas, followed by Maria Aceves, followed by Juan Salazar.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hi there. I'm Rosendo Sobranas. I'm back again, not just on the issue of what happened from last month, what I have mentioned, but now since I'm going through the due process of law to fight my case, all I'm experiencing is retaliation. I'm witnessing the district attorney's office do misconduct, I guess you can say, but it's more like unlawful practices. Basically, taunt my mother, which she is also defendant in this case. She doesn't know the law, so all they do is basically taunt her, you know, trying to get her a plea deal, I guess you can say, but it's not even a plea deal. It's just trying to get her to submit to something that's not valid. When I got out of jail, two charges were dropped. Commissioner seen that it was valid, that I was beat. Not that he didn't just want to drop the charges because there was no proof. He seen me injured, couldn't even sit in the chair, excuse me, the chair, properly. Had to get assistance to pick up stuff that I kept repeatedly dropping. Now that I'm seeing the district attorney play with my mom in a sense that she can't even stand up for her own educational rights, now I just take it as a sense of retaliation. Now that she's trying to stand up for her own right to get her case dismissed and her charges fought, this is ridiculous. As a city, I don't know what you guys can do, but I feel like something should be done. Now, the Superior Court is also just, in a sense, not helping her. She's trying to look for help, seek help, ask for help, and all she's just getting is a wall put in front of her. She's next to speak. Now, she can tell you what she's going through, what clerks are doing to her paperwork. So on that time, on that behalf, she can speak on that time of what she's going through. That's all I have to say. This is ridiculous. I'm trying to go through a due process of law that's not even getting handled the proper way. So that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Baranas. Next speaker, please.
Maria Aceves, followed by Juan Salazar, followed by Ernie Lozano.
My name is Maria. My name is Maria. Hello. My name is Maria Aceves. I've been beaten by sheriff officer, dragged in my house. Before that, my son Alfredo Sobranas got beat up. I have to help him out. He almost died. My son, Junior, had officers or sheriffs taking, want to take all his childrens away. I stood up for him. The sheriff kind of backed off because I said, "You're not taking my grandkids away from my son." I've been abused by the system of called government workers. It's not the seal of the government. It's the workers that's doing it, trying to put me as a man till I'm retarded. I'm a retired from, not retired, but I'm from disabled of my back spine. Vehicles hitting me, hitting me, until I finally spoke up. "Why are they hitting me? Why is this and that?" Then I'm retired, not retired, but I'm disabled from, I can't work in Local 220. I was a construction worker. I'm a mother who supported my eight childrens, and I just kept going and going. I go to the court building. They're throwing me left and right. They're taking my rights away. They're putting down that I go to this court, and then they send me somewhere else, somewhere else. It's like, I was trying to say that I'm, you know, I'm a retarded person. I'm not retarded. They got to pay E. They got somebody who's handling my money. I've been disabled since 2008. I got my one year of called state disability. Where is my other money? I got officers attacking, saying that, you know, lies on the report. Then I got the Christian Romo, "Come over here. We'll help you. We'll help you." And I go over there, and after they get all my information, they close the door on me and say, "Get out of here. Get out of here." It's like, what? I went to court on Room 12, and the judge is saying, "Give her her transit." And I spoke to a district attorney, that lady. I never spoke to her, just one time on the phone. I told her what I wanted out of my being, what the sheriff did.
Mrs. Aceves, your time is up. Can you bring your comments to a close, please?
What is that?
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you very much. I just want you guys to hear my voice, and God bless all of you guys.
Thank you, Mrs. Aceves. Next speaker, please.
Juan Salazar, followed by Ernie Lozano, followed by Brett Bruff.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Juan Salazar, I'm pretty sure you guys know me already. I represent, and I'd like to think I represent, my coworkers from all different parts of these departments that we work for in the city. And to say we're frustrated is an extreme understatement. To say that we're under-prioritized, that would be a joke. Because we're still waiting for the city to do something. You know, I hear you guys are important. We appreciate what you guys do. You're a priority. Actions speak louder than words, and your actions don't reflect what you say, not even a little bit. You know, these people work tirelessly. These people are the backbone of this city. And I think, to some degree, you kind of forget that after a while. I think the citizens of this city are not aware of how important it is what they do. You know, I thought about maybe writing another speech, but I think it's just better just to say kind of what I think. And it is extremely frustrating. This is a retention crisis that needs to be taken care of now. Already twice, the city has canceled negotiation talks for one reason or another. The numbers don't add up. You know, in the past, it's all about, "Well, we didn't have money." You gave us the numbers this time. Money's there. The growth is there. But it just seems like there's misinformation going here and there. You know, you might not take what I say seriously, but I think what these people are going to do, you will take seriously. If you have eyes, look. If you have ears, listen. You will see that their strength and their unity is what's going to push this city forward. And I seriously ask you guys to take some time and make a priority to get this done sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salazar. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Ernie Lozano, Brett Bruff, followed by Marcos Austin.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Ernie Lozano. Mayor, City Council, and fine ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you very much for allowing me to speak and to stand in front of you this evening. I'm kind of used to, I'm from San Diego originally, so I'm used to speaking in the council there. This is my first time here. I thank you very much. I wanted to bring up an issue that I'm sure you've heard the last weeks, months, years. That's worrisome for all of us, not only the city, but the state, our country, about the homeless problem. But I want to give it a little bit of a twist, something for you guys to think about. We really don't appreciate the dumpster diving, right? That happens in our businesses and our apartment complexes and everywhere else. So what can we do about this? Well, have many of you guys gone camping? Yes. My family and myself love to go to Yosemite. I ask my girls, "Where do you want to go on vacation?" They want to go to Yosemite. "You've been there like 15 times. It's beautiful." But they have dumpster divers there. They're called bears, raccoons, and squirrels. Beautiful little creatures. But how do you keep those animals wild? Well, they have special dumpsters that we can pull a little handle down, throw our trash in the chute, release it, and it falls into the dumpster. And these little creatures can't get in there. Well, I propose to you guys, please, to maybe implement a pilot program to use these type of dumpsters in some of these businesses or apartment complexes where there are dumpsters and use these somewhere and see if it works. And if it works, can we spread it throughout the city? So those are my thoughts. I wish you would consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lozano. Next speaker, please.
Brett Bruff, followed by Marcos Austin, followed by Anthony Rodriguez.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Brett Bruff. I've been working for the city of Bakersfield for about two years, eight years now. I'm currently a sewer maintainer, too, and I'm a member of my union, SEIU Local 521. I'd like to talk and comment on how we can't retain and recruit new workers to replace the ones that have left due to the low wages that the city currently offers. We in the city sewers department or the Streets of Maintenance Division are the true unsung heroes of this great city. Most people don't think about what happens when they flush the toilet, wash their hands, do the dishes, take a shower, or do laundry. They don't think about where the water and waste goes. That's because the city sewer division makes sure that the city sewer flow is where it needs to go. We make sure the sewer lines stay clean, the lift stations are operating properly, and the inner repairs that need to be done to any of the sewer lines are taken care of so that raw sewage does not flood down city streets and gutter lines. We have to deal with biohazards like urine, blood, human waste, drugs, needles, and different kinds of diseases or whatever else you could possibly imagine on a daily basis, and we don't even get hazard pay. We sometimes have to take care of the sewers in the middle of the night. We also take care of the stormwater and storm drains when we have heavy rains and in the middle of the night. There are times we get calls from residents because of sewer issues, and we have to go investigate and resolve those issues, even in the middle of the night. The fact that we can't retain and keep employees in our department can potentially mean sacrifice to city services that we provide. It does take a special person to do our jobs. Not everybody can do it. All that being said, we haven't had a reasonable cost of living increase in over 10 years. We don't even, we don't get heavy equipment operator pay, even though we operate heavy equipment like hydro sewer cleaning trucks, vacuum hydro trucks, cranes, and construction equipment. Reassessing employees don't understand why the city continues to delay on what we have asked for a decent cost of living increase in pay, which is a fair and livable wage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bruff. Next speaker, please.
Marcos Austin, followed by Anthony Rodriguez.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Marcos Austin. I work for the Bakersfield City Streets Department. I've been there for 15 years, and I'm here to talk about our retention issues. You know, when I first started this job 15 years ago, I'm getting old now, but when I first started this job 15 years ago, there wasn't a lot of movement. You know, it was hard to get in my department. You know, people stayed there for 20, 30 years. And, you know, they never left. They kept, they kept their jobs and then retired. You know, we fast-forward five years later, excuse me, within the last five years, and we can't keep anybody. You know, where I work with a bunch of highly skilled, motivated, versatile people that continue to help the streets. You know, we maintenance the streets. I don't know if you noticed the rain coming down these past months, but we're out there with waiters on pulling off the water to allow these streets to be accessible, you know, for the emergency services to thrive, for the local community to thrive, you know? And it's consistently a problem to retain new and incoming workers. You know, and that's not even, that's not even the new workers. That's also the workers that have been embedded for five, 10, 15 years. They're leaving. They understand that their skill set is, you know, more lucrative out in the private sector. So, you know, with those, with those things, we continue to lose people, and we're not gaining the access back to those people. You know, I want to commend my fellow coworkers here for coming up and speaking, speaking their truth, giving their opinion. You know, I've been with the city once again for 15 years, and this is one of the first times I've felt that we're all coming together for a huge point in our time. So, very much appreciated. Thank you. Shout-out to the Streets Department. You boys are the, also the unsung heroes.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Go, we have three remaining speakers. Anthony Rodriguez.
Yes.
Alberto Castaneda Medina and Blair Budai.
Thank you. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Anthony Rodriguez. I, of course, work for the city of Bakersfield. So I want to start off like this. There's this, and I'm just, it's going to have to be a little harsh because it's the time we're going through. There's this big misconception that we work for you guys, and that's not true. These are your constituents. These are taxpayers and voters of the community that puts you guys in that place to do what's right. Every time you guys get a phone call saying the parks are dirty, they need to be cleaned, streets need to be paved, markings on the road, trash need to get picked up, graffiti on the wall, you know who answers that call? These men and women right behind you. That's who answers this call. Do you think they really want to be part of any ribbon-cutting ceremony? Do you think they want their face plastered on television? Do you think they want their name on any monuments? No. They want what's owed to them and what is fair and what is right. 10 years ago, they promised us in good faith to hold jobs for the people of the community. They said, "Guess what? We're not going to be able to give you guys your COLA. We're not. We're not going to give you guys your raises, but we'll be back. Don't worry." Well, they came back a decade later with crumbs, with crumbs. Well, they came back a decade later with crumbs, with crumbs. And then we're hearing people downtown getting raises at 18%? Did they think about the cost, the future of our economy then? People are being reclassified, some of them are getting bonuses or extra pay more than some of these parks guys make in a year.
Mr. Rodriguez, your time is up.
What was that?
Your time is up. You know, just wait a minute, I want to check something.
I was watching it, I had like a minute left.
We have 20 minutes per topic, and so we've already extended our 20.
Can I, can I get 20, just 20 seconds to finish?
I'll give you 20 seconds.
Yeah, because that's not my fault. You know, I was giving my two. So, I say that to say this, and just to be honest, and I think everybody feels the same way. We can't be voted out. You guys can. We do our job. And if you don't do your job, we will put people at our part of the community that will do it. Remember that.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Are there any other speakers on other topics?
Mayor, I believe the next two speakers are on the same topic. We have one speaker on a separate topic, Blair Boudai.
Mayor, it doesn't matter what the topic is, it's 20 minutes on non-agenda items, the time is over.
Yeah. Thank you all for being here.
Mayor, if I could make some comments with regard to the issues that were raised.
All right.
Sir?
Yeah. Sorry. I need to.
Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, just, let's get everybody seated. Would you go ahead and sit down, please, or? Councilmember Arias.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure that they're watching, I know many of them left the chambers, but I think it's important to, even though this topic isn't agendized tonight, to make a couple of, you know, broad statements that I think are related to this issue. You know, this body has the authority to make allocations, you know, through the budget process and, and otherwise make investments, work through projects that are, you know, game changers. But I still firmly believe, since the day that I joined this council, that the best investment that we can make is in our own team and in our own employees and our workforce. I know that, you know, some of my colleagues on this council field similarly, but I, I think that we need to continue to work through this process. And I truly believe that there is a path forward, but we must continue to work at the negotiating table. Many times, from this dais, we talk about delivering excellent customer service, we talk about delivering these game changer projects, we talk about doing these amazing things for the benefit of our entire community, but we oftentimes forget to mention that it is those wonderful people that were sitting here in this chamber tonight that are the ones who bring those projects to life. These are the faces, the hands that worked to put together all of the many great things that we're trying to do for our citizens. And so I think it's, it's important that we respect them and, and provide for a fair and competitive wage. And the last thing I'll say is that the city remains to be a good faith partner. Without solicitation from any of the labor unions, several years ago, the city conducted and self-imposed what's called a classification and compensation study. Seeing that there were hundreds of vacancies within City Hall, the city of Bakersfield felt that it was necessary for us to conduct a classification and compensation study. Now, I've realized that studies can oftentimes take a lot longer than we ever expected, and I know that we're waiting for that data to come back to us so that we can continue to make progress towards bringing many of our positions to competitive market. But I know we will get there, and I think that pathway is through continuing these discussions and continuing to have good conversations at the negotiation, negotiations table. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments, item 6A. One appointment to the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Governing Board. Two applications for appointment have been received, or nomination have been received from Mayor Cory Morse from Maricopa and Councilmember Gilberto Reyna from Wasco.
Thank you. As the city clerk provides ballots to the council, I'd like to clarify the voting process Although the council will use ballots, the outcome of the vote will be made public by the clerk. Based on these results, the council will then make the appropriate motion regarding the nomination. Following the council meeting, the individual ballots will be available for public review
Mayor, the person receiving the highest number of votes for the nomination is Councilmember Gilberto Reyno, Reyna from Wasco.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Move to appoint Gilberto Reyna from the city of Wasco to the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Governing Board.
You have a motion?
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item, please.
Appointments, item 6B. One at-large appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission to a term to expire March 30th, 2026, due to the term expiration of Michael McCoy. Applications for appointment have been received from Michael McCoy, Scott Jones, Sarah Trask, and James Bunting.
Thank you. Stated before, council will, council will use ballots, and the outcome of the vote will remain public by the clerk. Based on these results, the council will then make the appropriate motion regarding the appointment. Following the council meeting, the individual ballots will be available for public review
Mayor, the person receiving the highest number of votes for the three-year term position is Michael McCoy with five votes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Move to appoint Mike McCoy to the Historic Preservation Commission.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Councilmember Reyna and Mr. McCoy, thank you so much for your willingness to serve. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent, calendar items 7A through 7AH for approval. A staff memorandum has been provided for item 7J, correcting Skrivner's error.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Does any member of the council wish to recuse themselves from any item? Seeing none, Councilmember Gray is asked to pull 7I for separate consideration, and Councilmember Freeman, 7AH for separate consideration. So I make a motion to approve the consent agenda tonight, with the exception of 7I and 7AH.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Councilmember Gray, 7I.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. I'm pulling 7I only for the purpose of bringing attention to, I believe, is a greater problem that's happening throughout our country. It's a national problem, and it's affecting us right here in Bakersfield. This is regarding the Entrepreneurship Ecosystem Technical Assistant and Assistance and Grant Program. First of all, I want to just say, I'm not opposed to this program, I'm not opposed to these monies being spent. What I am opposed to, and I'm hoping that at a federal level that we can come to grips with what we're trying to do, to do to our country, by destroying that equal opportunity for all. When I read through this, and I, I realized that there's three out of seven wards that are be, being awarded this grant for entrepreneurship, which I'm very much for, because we are entrepreneurs ourself, my husband and I. It only benefits those that are minority entrepreneurs, including women-owned, black, indigenous, people of color, LGBTQ, that experience disparities in their community. I'm reading off of it. I don't, again, wish to withhold any of these funds, but at one time, my husband was a disadvantaged white male who did not have the opportunity to have grant funds given to him to be able to open his own business. I would love to see one day when this country is not so stuck on gender, on color, on financial status, to where every one of a white male, white female, white or black male, black female, Indian, it doesn't matter, that they come out of college and they want to be entrepreneurs, that they can go and fill out an application that doesn't ask any of those questions, they just have an opportunity, like everyone else, to be able to start their own businesses. So with that, I'm just thinking that at a local level, it needs to be brought to the attention that these funds that are coming into our city that I'm very grateful for, that are going to help a lot of wonderful people, that I have no, you know, malice or any of that, I just want to see the system be fair, that it's equal opportunity for everyone, no matter who they are, in this country, that they can gain access. So I just want to say I appreciate the opportunity to speak on that, and I feel like what is happening today is another form of discrimination that we as a country can say, we're not going to take this anymore, we're not going to let it divide us, I'm not going to, we're not going to be divided because she and I are a different color, but we're going to be united because we can make this country great by coming together rather than dividing us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a comment. Councilmember Gray, I respectfully disagree with your comments. I think in order for us to fully realize a country that is true and great and has equal opportunity for all, we must recognize the historical systemic evidence of racism, of disadvantaged communities, people who have been held back from developing intergenerational wealth. There's plenty of documentation in this country of redlining, of systemic policies in the banking industry and in local government and state governments that have held people of color back for decades. These are policies and histories that have affected my constituents, my family, many of the people that I know and love. And I think it's important for us to recognize that and recognize that these programs are a way for us to address some of those systemic issues that are affecting our community, that there are issues that we may not see every day, and I think it's, it's nice to hear that we want to be equal, but it's really important for us to understand that it is not equal for many people and their experiences. And so I hope that we can continue this conversation at this dais and continue to pursue programs like this in the future. And so with, I'd like to make the motion tonight to approve 7I.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Cor.
Do we vote, and then do I comment? Or do I comment before we vote?
Go ahead and comment now.
Okay. Yeah, I'm going to have to respectfully disagree as well in a country that has, I mean, it's Women's, it's Women's Month, the March, March is the month of Women's Month. And the reason we celebrate something of the sort is because there is a international, historical, but especially national, there are systemic discrepancies, exactly as Councilmember Andreas Gonzalez is saying, that, Andre Gonzalez, sorry, got your name wrong. But programs like these and institutions like the city of Bakersfield, like Cal State Bakersfield, are trying to, are trying to undo histories and long histories of injustices, but also inequalities that prevented someone like you and I from having opportunities, from being entrepreneurs, from being business owners. But those realities are not of the past, they exist today. We live in a country with a gender gap, a wage gap. And if some, if we can do, if we can have a small part in mitigating that and helping and in changing that for the next generation, I think that's our responsibility. And today, so many families, even within my own district, within the city, face the same issues. And if institutions like the Black Chamber of Commerce, like the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, institutions that we have great respect for, events that we all attend happily and are so happy to support, if they are doing their part in making sure that communities of color have that equal opportunity to sit at a table, it's exactly what we can be a part of. And I'm so happy that the city is taking the step forward to be a part to be a part of those conversations as well. It's our role and it's, I frankly think it's the direction our city should be heading, and it's the opportunities that we should be creating for the next generations to come so that folks can sit here proudly and be proud of a city that supports their dreams, no matter that we live in a country that has the histories that we've inherited of the inequalities we face every day. And frankly, people still experience every day, whether they're trying to go to school, whether they're trying to own a business, whether they're just going about their day. So again, I respectfully disagree. I'm glad that we could have a conversation about this, and that's all I have to say about that, but.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I just think it's so important that we continue to pursue opportunities for us to ensure that the American dream works for everybody, right? That ability to go to work and to be able to provide for your family and to also, to one day hopefully, be able to retire, you know, with dignity and the ability to continue to cover the basic expenses for you and your family. And we must acknowledge that, you know, that is not equal as we look across demographics, as we look across age brackets, as we look, you know, by gender. There are so many different ways that we can cut it up, but at the end of the day, that playing field is not equal. And in fact, I took a moment to take a look at an article from the Federal Reserve where it says that white Americans hold 84% of total United States wealth, but make up only 60% of the population, while Black Americans hold 4% of the wealth and make up 13% of the population. That American dream is dependent on access to capital and access and ability to earn money and develop that wealth and to pass it on to generations to come. And I think frankly, it's profoundly damaging to make the assumption that that playing field is equal because it's absolutely not, and I just, you know, I want to commend staff truthfully because the City of Bakersfield has never been in a position to continue to be aggressive and creative in developing these new partnerships. I'm a huge fan of, you know, coming together and believing that we can build something that's a lot different and a lot better for a whole lot of people when we come together and put our minds together. So with that, I just, I support this effort and I hope that there's more to come.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Gray.
And as I said going into my comments tonight, I support the effort for the grant, but we have to recognize that there are many other things that play into equal opportunity. It's not just the equity card. And my husband, again, I'm just saying from my own life experience, he came from a very poor family, was raised by a mother and grandmother, his father left the home, he didn't have any choice but pull himself up by the bootstraps, go out and start mowing lawns at the age of 11, and became a very successful businessman. So it is not all based on color of skin and so forth. We all have the same opportunity to pull ourselves up and thrive, and I want every entrepreneur in the county of Kern, the City of Bakersfield, to have the same opportunity, every single person, not just a select few. And I am in a ward where our ward is, the highest percentage is Hispanic, and I want them to be able to thrive, of course, and that's who I'm representing, and I love my ward. And if I didn't love my ward and I didn't want to represent Hispanic people, I wouldn't be sitting here tonight. But I want the same underprivileged white person to be able to be entrepreneur as well. So that's my point that I'm making tonight. I am not, I am not doing anything but just wanting equal opportunity for all under what our Constitution has given us, our U.S. Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Cor.
I don't think that you can say, you can remove race from this conversation, but then say that you do want equal opportunity for underprivileged white students as well. From this language, I'm not sure that it bars them from applying for it, but I think it is, does it say, "underprivileged white people cannot apply to this"? Can city staff clarify?
It says exactly, exactly what people groups they are going to.
Councilmember Cor has the floor. Go ahead.
Councilmember, on the spot, I'm not sure if I can clarify that question. We can clarify that in writing. It is my understanding that because these are ARP dollars and federal dollars, there is a requirement that they be expended in our disadvantaged neighborhoods or qualified census tracts. Also, there is language that does require that there be outreach and eligibility for those categories that you had mentioned, but I can't speak to whether that precludes any other participants, but we'll follow up in writing.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
So to continue, I don't, I'm sorry, I have the floor right now. Thank you. I would just say, I don't think it's worth going into the histories of how colonialization and global colonialization works and going into the personal histories of each of our families and how our communities happen to end up in the United States seeking refuge, whether by choice or not, whether that was a matter of coming, however, families have come into the U.S., I think we can all spend time going into that, but I think there's matters at hand that we can get to, and this is a conversation clearly that we need to have, but I think it is severely damaging to point out the specific communities that you have in saying that it is not worth investing in them specifically for something that's just getting, having entrepreneurial opportunities. So I would just be very careful of how that sounds coming from the city council dais and that you do, and we all have residents in this city who would frankly take great offense to those comments coming from a representative body. So yeah, I don't think that we should get into how each of us have ended up in the United States and what opportunities we were afforded. I think this is a great program and I think we should, are we ready to take a vote?
I did not say what she just represented me as saying. Thank you.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now for the next item, Councilmember Freeman, 7AH.
I would like to get a little clarification that this item would appear to be on the consent agenda, and by approving this, I had the impression that we were, at least the council endorsing staff's recommendation on rates. And if that was it, I simply wanted to be transferred and have them present, here's what their recommendation was, and here were their reasons why, briefly, because, you know, raising rates substantially is something the public's interested in, and I think if we were going to do it anyway next week or the next hearing, then you can say, I'll just defer. But if this is the time to sort of say, here's what staff recommend, and here were the reasons why, and seven people can hear it and say, hey, sounds good to us, or maybe we have a motion. You know, I'm not sure all of us agree, so we had to find out what at least the majority of the council would like to see. So briefly, maybe a little explanation.
Mr. Clegg.
Yeah, I think it comes from our freedom, Mary, in council. This item is about sending out the Proposition 218 notices to residents to declare whether they, you know, have issue with those rate increases or not, and so there will be a future date in time where we have action items on which council will actually vote for those rates. That being said, I think you're right, Councilmember Freeman, that there is an implicit support of the proposal if it's going out, you know, on a postcard saying, these are the proposed rates, and we're happy to have staff provide a brief presentation on what those rates are. Again, this is not the council vote to establish those rates, it's just to send the rate notice out. But we can walk through the rationale for the recommendation as proposed and presented to the Water Board, but I would, again, just note that council will have an opportunity to take action on the rates in the future, but happy to have Gary Howland, who's our interim director right now for Water, kick off a quick summary of the rates proposed.
Sure. Happy to go through our presentation, Councilmember and other members of the council. Also with me, Daniel Mononado, who's our Assistant Water Resources Director. Once we've appointed him, we've had a lot of rain, so hopefully he brings me good luck as I'm presenting this to you tonight. But I do want to just highlight a couple of things. We won't go into as much depth as we did at the Water Board.
You have two very good, or even one very good chart. I think if you just put it up and explained it, that would.
We'll go straight to it then.
Just do a short discussion, and everyone here is smart and understand what you're saying.
I'm thinking this is the chart. Okay, let me do this one and then I'll lead into the next one. So what was presented at the Water Board was a rate structure in which we got feedback that we should have more of the rates front-loaded, and so that's what you're seeing here is a 10% rate increase in year one with, in year two through five, a level rate of 6% increases. The other thing I want to highlight is that black line is our 25% reserve balance number that we're trying to stay above. That's kind of our floor. So the goal there was to help us maintain the reserves, help us stay in good financial condition, and you can see we're spending down our reserve balances, but then in year four and five, which is year 2027 and 2028, we kind of hover at that level net neutral number. And this slide also shows the net cash flow. So that second to last line of our net cash flow, how we are spending down those fund balances in years one through four, and then we get to a net cash flow neutral position in year five, which you'll see on that net cash flow line. So our cash reserves, we're trying to maintain about a $15 to $14 million balance, just, again, to stay at that 25% 90-day threshold to keep our operational reserves intact. So I think the other question that often comes up is, are we still the lowest with this 10% increase? So you can see in the greater Bakersfield area, we still are the lowest, that $31.91 is an average monthly bill that a single-family homeowner will receive after that 10% increase. And then this is a slide that shows, how do we compare across the state? And again, still the lowest across the state. Some of our neighbors to the north, the neighbors to the south, some of them are triple the monthly rate, so we're still remaining very conservative and fiscally responsible for our rates. And just to touch on what City Manager Clegg had talked about, this kind of kicks off the Prop 218 notices, so this is critical to take and receive some direction tonight from this council so that we can begin that noticing process, let the public see this, provide us comments, and then this council receives, has a public hearing on June 14th to consider the formal rate adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Howland. Councilmember Freeman, anything else?
Could you put up the chart that looks like this, that shows with your new rate proposal, how the reserves are restored over five years? You see this one?
Yes.
Is that it?
Yes.
That shows the 10, 6666?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you. The point I wanted to make, and I think first we all, at least the Water Board, we agreed, let's bite the bullet this year. We have the lowest reserves now, let's start resorting quicker, and I think there is always the communication with the public and the optics of something that, you know, 10% is a big increase, and many people are going to say, oh, my God, we can't afford 10%. But this has been a difficult year throughout the country. Inflation has been running rampant, and I think people this year can kind of swallow hard and say, well, all right, you know, it's been bad, bite the bullet. When they see a 6% increase every year for another, it's four more years, right? It's a five-year plan?
Yes.
They're, first of all, going to say, you're projecting 6% inflation for five years? Gee, that's not what the Federal Reserve is, and no one's saying that. What's going on? And I think in the committee, you explained, well, it isn't inflation. We have pipes repair, water wells to rework, gas, we've been told to budget by PG&E, 7-8% increases every single year. We actually did not put a big inflation in the salary number. So as you explained that, it became more clear, which I think even in the hearing, you'll need to explain that, so people go, well, why 6%? Oh, my God, what's going on? That there were concrete improvements, capital expenditures, more regulatory things, replacing all these filters that we never had to do before, all sorts of things that are driving that to be higher, higher than what, you know, hopefully inflation goes down, it will still be higher than inflation. I understand that, and I don't think that we flushed it out at committee. I don't think any of us knew that was what was driving it. But we're still talking about projecting, and, you know, I've been getting projections on business plans, on projects for 33 years, and once we get beyond two years, they're always inaccurate, three, very inaccurate, four and five people even, the five-year plans are 100% inaccurate. No one's ever, ever broken that we aren't capable of seeing the future that far out, you or me or anyone else. Every time we do the five-year business plan with big companies, we just laughed at it and we said, whatever it is, it won't be what we said because no one can project. Three years is almost, is very doubtful. So I'm only, so generally, I don't know if we even have to do a five-year deal. You know, three-year deals are common, you feel a little more comfortable, you can forecast three years a lot better than five for anything. And so I know at committee, we had two of the members, Andre and Bob, I think, in the end, you know, supported the staff's 10, 6666, and I had said, how about, I think, 10, 5555, okay? Only because I don't trust long-term projections, my experiences have haven't been accurate, and if the expenses are actually greater, you're going to come back to us in two or three years and say, you know, the greater we project it, I need increase, and we're going to give it to you. I just think it will be hard for us, since it is a projection, we don't know about any of this stuff. If it was going to be a long-term lock-in like this and we're going to fix the rates for five years, I'd rather have it be, it's usually where it leaned when we're talking about 5% a year, but that everybody is always working as hard as they can to keep the expenses down because there's nothing comfortable about it, we're all going to watch every penny. That's kind of the way you run a business. 6% is kind of what we're comfortable, and we don't work as hard to keep our costs down. So that's really my reason, just philosophically about, if I were to do, support something, I would have said 10, 5555, and two of my colleagues, you know, and staff would like more cushion in there. So I raised that because I think, and even if it was 10, 5 and 1/2, 5 and 1/2, even that, but I think we're going to have some unhappy people questioning our, you know, our decision-making if we lock in 6% for five more years. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank
I want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Freeman, for his comments, and both tonight and at the Water Board meeting. The reason I support this structure is that even if, and I agree with him about projections, it gets harder and harder to project the further and further you go out. But even if you, even if we look at the next two fiscal years, we notice there's a net cash flow, negative cash flow in the next fiscal year, even with a 10% increase in '24, 6% in '25, and a 6% in '26, a negative cash flow is significant and concerning. I mean, that only grows with that 5 and 1/2%. And so I think it's important for us to kind of address the needs that we know today, the known knowns, and, for lack of a better term, bite the bullet and pursue, you know, this structure that allows us to get to that goal of 25% by 2028. So I appreciate the comments, but I think it's important for us to just move forward. People are going to be upset with 6%, people are going to be upset with 5 and 1/2%. We know that. Our job is to address the needs for our public infrastructure as best as we can. So I'm going to make the motion that we approve the recommendation.
Thank you. Councilmember, where did you sign off?
I signed off.
Okay, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to reiterate, we are not projecting a 6% inflation, and that Councilmember Freeman did state that. But if you look at the cost, you know, the debt service is constant, capital projects, you know, goes up and down depending on what we're going to do, and the actual inflation is in the operation and maintenance, and it looks like it's a 2% to 2 and 1/2% guess. So, you know, what happens if we don't move forward, then we end up not doing the capital projects, and we have deferred maintenance, and that's what we've already done for too long. And so I also am in favor of, you know, the rate, and I understand that's not what we're voting on, but I just want to stay my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Councilmember Freeman, push your button.
See, these things, we shouldn't be talking about them as though they're going to happen because they're guesses. Saying, well, we won't have the money for this, and no, we're, this is a guess that the department heads have given us. There's nothing concrete about it except the revenue stream. So the expenses are unknown. It's a conservative guesstimate, and it still becomes less accurate as you go out. My point was, let's recognize that, and that we know if you were too liberal, whatever we want to say, and they're really a lot higher, you know, you didn't budget, you're going to be back here in two years, and we're going to approve it. Because, you know, you'll convince us that it's really legitimate. My point was that we can't say, yes, we're going to, we're going to fill the reserves with this anymore at 6 or 5 because it is, it is quite a guess as what's going to happen as we move out in those years. So it's really just making a point of what we're really voting on. It's a projection. Okay, thank you. We can go ahead and vote.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Freeman voting no.
Thank you. Next item, please. Colleagues, after this item, we'll take a break unless anybody needs a break at this point. Okay, next item, please.
Hearings.
Our next item is public hearings. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers per side, so it's important that you identify yourself and make your statements succinctly so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to the staff's recommendation first, then we'll hear from those who would like to speak in favor of the staff's recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the TV screens behind me which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone and identify yourself. After 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up. Quickly enter statement. You may ask questions during your public statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk, and she'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing item.
Public hearing to consider Action Plan Amendment Number Five to U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD Action Plan, Fiscal Year 2021-22, for the Home Investment Partnership American Rescue Plan Program Allocation Plan for $5,458,039. A staff memorandum has been provided transmitting correspondence regarding this item.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Our community economic development director, or economic and community development director, Paul Saldana, will provide a brief presentation on this item.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm pleased to present the city's application for $5.4 million under the Home Investment Partnership Program that's funded by the American Rescue Program. This is also known as Home ARP. This program is a one-time allocation, but similar in scope to our other HUD-funded entitlement programs in terms of the application process. The public hearing tonight is a required element of the application, and it's similar to, as I said, our CDBG program. It's the culmination of a much broader public participation and stakeholder consultation activity. In addition to consultation meetings with different stakeholders, we've also had a number of public participation events and surveys we conducted in English, Spanish, and Punjabi throughout the community. Gaps and needs analysis was also conducted as required by HUD regulations. The allocation plan focuses on three primary areas. The first is development of additional affordable rental housing. The second is supporting case management to access housing opportunities and other support services. And third, to help our local nonprofits build capacity to operate at a higher level of service in providing assistance to those seeking housing. The action before you this evening is to hold the requisite public hearing and authorize the submission of the application to HUD for the funding. Following the confirmation from HUD, the city will proceed with requests for proposals for the allocation of funding as part of our normal process, which includes presentation of the, or presentation to the Budget and Finance Committee once applications have been scored and received. I'd like to recognize the team that has worked on the application this last several months. With me this evening is Priscilla Martinez, our principal planner, who supervises the Affordable Housing Unit, Rojelio Martinez, who was the primary planner on the Home ARP application, Sergio Serrano, who is our fellow and has worked diligently on this project as well, and our assistant director, Jenny Byers, who staffs the Housing Homeless Ad-hoc Committee as well as oversees this unit. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have after the public hearing process.
Thank you, Mr. Saldana. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor, in support? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Mr. Saldana and thank Ms. Martinez, Mr. Martinez, Mr. Serrano, and Ms. Byers for all the great work, and the whole ECD team for all the exciting projects that you're working on now and in the future. Just had one quick question before I make a motion. The tenant-based rental assistance fund indicates that there's no dollars through Home ARP that's allocated, but we are addressing rental assistance programs for those who qualify in other, in other programs.
That is correct, yes.
Can you describe that for the public, please?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have dollars that were CDBG, or excuse me, ESG-CV dollars that came through CARES, that $700,000 that we've allocated to a rental assistance program along the same lines that you've described, but just a term funding source.
Great. Thank you very much. Make a motion to, make a motion to adopt staff's recommendation, the approval of the Fiscal Year 21-22 Action Plan, Amendment Number Five, and authorization to the city manager to execute all documents required to submit the allocation plan to HUD.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Freeman.
Couple of questions. I was going to ask a similar question to Councilman Gonzalez about rental assistance. And we have a letter from Sandra Rodriguez about, gee, why didn't this include a $1 million rental assistance? We've talked about this before, and I think the answer was, we are getting it from other sources. However, one-time sources are not, in my opinion, a good place to do ongoing commitments. I don't want to start a rental assistance program one year and cancel it the next. I don't think that's good policy for the city. So two points. I would like us, in our annual budgeting, if possible, to have an ongoing, I don't know if that can be measure-in funds or what, but an ongoing rental assistance pool that's just part of our budget. I don't know if that should be 500,000, I don't know if it should be a million, but I just think it's part of something in our city we should have, so we don't say, well, we're not going to do any this year because we didn't get a grant. I just don't think that's the way to go. However, if we have things in here, it says supportive services, well, 575,000, well, if these are one-time and we're going to provide support services this year, we're going to cut them off next year, what's the point? Why not put them into capital improvements and build more apartments or whatever? Why would we do, when you start something, it's really hard to just cut it off the next year. So I don't know what these supportive services, but I hate to say we're going to help all these, you know, more psychologists, more of the health people, and we're going to stop it all the next year because we didn't, you know, we don't have an ARPA fund anymore. So are these, those types of supportive services that do not need to be ongoing once we started doing them?
These are supportive services that are directly tied to this program, and so the, when we release the RFP for this, this project, for those particular units that will be developed, these will be in support of those programs.
Okay, but is this just, is this saved for future years, or is there going to, are we going to need, let's say you get them built, are we going to need another 575 each year to provide those, or is this somehow saved, or is just to get them in the first time? I just, is this an ongoing program, but we only have one year's of funding here?
This is not an ongoing program. It's supporting current services that are available, but directed towards these particular units that will be developed.
Okay, so these are services that will be needed the following year, but we know law, but we don't currently have funding for them. Is that right?
If I could, yeah, if I could, Councilmember Freeman, add a couple other pieces. So typically, when you build a project like this and you create units, you're doing case management and wraparound services for the initial tenants that are being placed into these units. And while there is an ongoing need, it's not quite as big of a need as the first ramp-up as you're getting people placed into these units. But I think your point is well-made. What's the long-term plan for continuing to provide case management services, wraparound services in all of our housing projects, permanent supportive housing, et cetera? There's actually quite a web of different funding sources. We have the state HAP dollars, we have our CDBG dollars, this is kind of a one-time Home ARP program. And one of the things that's happening right now in our regional collaborative of the many different housing providers and homelessness shelter providers is that there's actually been a series of one-time allocations that have recurred now four years in a row, and we're looking at the fifth year of the HAP funding from the state. And so some of those services are being provided, are ongoing services, and we do have a little bit of a cliff for when those, if those funds don't continue, we'll be in a tight spot for being able to continue to provide that same level of services. I would note that it is, it is a significant amount of funding across the city, the county, and the homeless collaborative. We're talking about probably millions of dollars, and I'm not sure that we could fit all of that into our budget, but I think your point is well-made. Do we need to look at some of our own resources to make sure we have at least a minimum of service that we can provide in these supportive services? But I think the good news is, you know, the Mayor Go and other mayors, the big city mayors are fighting the good fight with the state to have ongoing, regular funding sources come towards these programs so that we don't have to pick up the tab. But in the meantime, there is wisdom for the city setting aside some dollars to be a stopgap for when these one-time dollars go away.
This is, the 4 million is a lot of development, so that's capital, that's to build units, which take at least a year. Are these units we have not yet started, or are they halfway built?
These will be units that will come through an RFP process.
Okay, so we haven't built them yet, then that's two years to get them finished and occupied. How long do we have available, the 575, to spend it?
In terms of the date to spend?
Yeah, I mean, how long? Is it good for four years, two years, three years, until it goes away?
Yeah, so through 2023.
2030.
2030, sorry. I said three, so.
Three years?
Yeah.
2030.
Okay, thank you, then we probably can spend it by then. Okay, I, for these projects, that's fine. I'm, let me raise the issue. I think we have to be careful about getting one-time funds and putting them into operating kind of expenses that will need to be filled in future years when we don't have the grants, and we should be careful as the council about getting ourselves in that situation without actually knowing what we're doing. Because our revenues could be going down in, will, after inflation, they're definitely going to be going down in the next few years. You know, when you're not building homes and adding to the inventory, you're not getting as much property tax. There won't be one commercial building in the entire city of Bakers that has the same value next year, or even right now, that it did a year ago. So all of that's going down. So we won't be able to generate the same kind of taxes. It may level off because it's really, you know, we got 6% inflation, it's really 6% less, but our budget would be more challenged in the next few years, and we need to be aware of that and all thinking about it.
If I was going to say, if I can add a clarification to, this is, these funds are typically stacked with other funds, other state, federal, and local funds. And in the projects we've seen, similar to the Sage Ridge Project, which is under construction now, there are support services that are built into that project, and so the developer of the project has put that into their pro forma so that they can continue those services through the duration of whatever their deed restrictions are.
I'm all for this. I just thought, I wanted to ask questions and raise the issues, and these are federal dollars, they were kind of free money. The state will start cutting. I mean, they have a massive budget deficit. It won't be getting better each year now, and they'll start hacking away at what they send downstream. You can, they always have, they have no choice, so we should be expecting that, too. But I won't hold this up anymore. I'm totally in favor of this, so we can move on.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Thank you. And let's take a break and come back at 7:10. An Arvin High student, I think you just left, I was going to give you a shout-out, but thank you for being here. Councilmember Gray.
All right, Bruce, ready to go?
Right, let's reconvene. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Reports, Item 10A, 2045 General Plan Update.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to turn over to Chris Boyle, Development Services Director, to kick this off.
Thank you. Mayor Go, commissioners, pardon me, council members, I've been double-dutying lately. It's a real pleasure to bring to you an update on the general plan effort. The last time we brought this topic to you was over a year ago now. I've, I've been getting comfortable with comparing the general plan effort to a marathon and not a sprint, but quite frankly... But quite frankly, lately, it's more of a marathon sprint. That said, I'm really fortunate to have Rincon Consulting as our teammates in the general plan effort. And tonight, Ms. Della Acosta is here to make a presentation. Della?
Thank you, Chris. And thank you, Councilmembers, for having me here tonight. I'm really excited to give you an update on our progress on the general plan. Can you find the clicker here? Make sure I know how to work it. Here we go. So a quick introduction to our team. Our team at Rincon is led by Camico Lazzardi, who is not here with us tonight, and myself as the deputy project manager. We do also have a team of other consultants joining us. We have Mentor Harnish and QK. We have DKS assisting us with transportation and Nadelson Dale Group helping us with economics, VMA providing engagement support. And of course, we have your amazing city staff, who have honestly been some of the best I've had the pleasure of working with. Tonight, I'm going to go through some of the just very high-level requirements of updating a general plan to get some familiarity with that, in case you're not already familiar. The overall timeline for the project, just a quick update, big milestones, and what we've accomplished already, what we're going to accomplish in the coming year, and how you all will continue to be brought into this process. So the general plan is often called the blueprint or the roadmap. It's the highest-level policy document that all of the other planning documents in the city have to be consistent with and kind of nest under. The idea of the general plan, the whole concept of it, is that it provides a long-term vision for the development of the community. State requirements do say that the general plan has to cover a number of specific topics. Those topics can be organized in any fashion that fits the vision of the community. And other topics can be included if the community wants to include them, if it's best for that community. I will note that air quality is specific to cities jurisdictions in the Sandwick Valley. And environmental justice is a newer requirement that is only applicable to certain jurisdictions that meet certain criteria, which Bakersfield does. You're probably familiar why we are updating your general plan, but it basically boils down to it's become a bit dated. So your general plan is 20 years old, and it's not really meeting the needs of the community any longer. We are giving it a refresher, updating a lot of things to make sure that it's meeting the modern needs, the modern challenges, and your current vision for what Bakersfield is and will be in the next 20 to 25 years. There's also been a lot of changes in legislation, as I'm sure you're aware. So we're making sure that the updated general plan is incorporating all of those changes, is aligning with the other work that you may be doing related to those legal changes. And we are updating the policies to meet those requirements. As far as what requirements specifically we will be meeting, honestly, I could hold multi-day seminars on that topic, and I'm happy to answer any questions specifically, but they generally fall into these broad categories. We're also working with the city on ensuring that all of the other work you're currently doing, because you have a lot of other ongoing efforts at the moment, will be integrated into the general plan and consistent with it. So there's a lot of things that have been recently updated or are currently being updated alongside this effort. And so we are working with the other teams and city staff to make sure that all of the data is aligned, all of the information is consistent, that we are combining efforts so we're not overwhelming the community. The housing element is technically part of the general plan itself, so we're bringing that in alignment with the rest of the general plan as we update it. And where we can, we are also combining outreach efforts and other information, hopefully saving you a little budget in the process. And how long is all of this going to take? Obviously, this is not a small or simple document. So it is a multi-year process that we started last year. We are right there at that pink red line. So we've completed, it is a little hard to read the text on that, isn't it? We have completed the existing conditions analysis. We have completed the vision and guiding principles, which you have in front of you, I believe. And we are moving into land use alternatives in the next phase. When the land use alternatives has been set, when the alternative has been chosen to move forward with, we'll be in earnest, moving into policy updates, writing the general plan. In tandem with that, we'll be doing the environmental review and finalizing the documents, anticipating adoption at the end of 2024. And we are on target with that schedule at this point. This is really just another way of looking at that schedule. We've organized the project into different phases. So we have completed the initiation and the learning phase, and we are moving into the land use alternatives phase. So we've done all of the engagement that are in, that is in the initiation and learning boxes. We've completed the existing conditions report and the vision and guiding principles, which I'll talk more about in a second. We've done a whole lot of engagement, which I'll also talk more about in a second. And we'll be doing the land use alternatives. And now this exciting part, where I get to talk about all the fun stuff we've done. So we have done a lot of engagement. And I want to just pause here for a second and really give a, an amazing shout out to your city staff, your planning department, and say that they have been amazing at building relationships, going out into the community, having trust with the community, and been phenomenal at helping with the engagement effort. They have done a lot on their own, and the trust that the community has in them and the relationships that they built have really made this project a success so far. We have conducted seven workshops, and you have a map here showing we have distributed these workshops throughout the city so that people could participate, hopefully close-ish to their home. If they couldn't participate in person, we've also had virtual workshops. The workshops covered two different topics. We had kickoff workshops that gave introductory, introductory information and kind of explained what a general plan is, why it's important, why we're updating it, and why they should participate. And then we had a set of workshops on vision and guiding principles. And these really invited people to think big and tell us what they loved about Bakersfield and what they really want their neighborhoods and their community to be in the next 20 to 30 years. We've done two surveys through the website, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Boyle, but I believe each survey had over 200 responses. The first one was focused on housing needs, housing situations, and what the community would like to see in housing in Bakersfield. And the second one was again on visioning and what they would like their community to be in the next couple of decades. And then we also asked them how they would like us to engage with them through this process so that we could better tailor our engagement efforts to fit what they needed and how we could communicate with them best. We've done 13 pop-up booths where we went out to where the community was already gathering, things like farmers' markets and community events, and set up booths and handed out information, talked to people where they were already at. Four of those were led by the consultant team. Nine of them were led by city staff. And we've done seven stakeholder group meetings where we organized meetings by topic and invited experts in that topic area. It included local and regional agencies, local business owners, non-governmental organizations, and had them come and talk to us about what they thought was important, what the issues were, what the needs were, what the gaps were, and what we should really focus on in this update. And then we had additional communication through the website. If you haven't checked out the website, I highly encourage you to check out the website. We have email blasts that go out to the community on the emails, the email list the city has, and social media posts on the city's social media sites. What did we get out of all of this? We got a lot more than I can really put on one slide, but I'll try. We really got that the community cares a lot about Bakersfield. They care a lot about the community culture. They care a lot about housing, housing needs, housing options, housing diversity, housing cost, a lot about accessibility to amenities, accessibility to jobs, accessibility to open space, to nature, parks. They care a lot about health and safety, to quality of life. And we heard that it was very important that not only the general plan itself, but the process of updating it was very, incorporated all of the voices in the community and really focused on environmental justice. And so we invited community groups that were already established and active, like the Leadership Council and the Jakarta Movement and a couple of others, to meet on a regular basis so that we could vet policy ideas with them and make sure that we're meeting the mark there. We shifted our engagement patterns. We heard that workshops were great for some people. A lot of people love traditional workshops, but a lot of people were struggling to attend those. And so we shifted to include more pop-ups, more virtual options where people could participate through the website, and more staff-driven initiatives to really take advantage of that trust that people had with the staff. And all of that engagement, all of the information that we heard, really informed the vision and guiding principles and will continue to inform the other initiatives and, and work that we have going forward with the land use alternatives and the policy work. So shifting gears a bit and talking about the reports that we've done so far, we have put out an existing conditions report. It is available in full, again, on the website. Highly encourage you to go to the website and check it out in full. It is a beautiful document. It provides a snapshot of what Bakersfield is, data-wise, in 2022. So it's a lot of data across multiple topics that apply to the general plan, although I'm sure it can be very useful for other things. And like I said, it's a very beautiful document. We're not really big on walls of text here. We don't want a whole lot of technical mumbo jumbo. We want to be able to hand this document to a junior high student, or a neighbor, or grandmother, anyone, and have them understand what's in this document. And every document moving forward. So this, this is really setting the stage for how everything with this project and the general plan itself will be looking. And in that spirit of accessibility and having everyone understand what's coming out of this project, we took the existing conditions report and pulled out the really big bits of information from it, and we created an existing conditions story map. I really wish I could show you the story map here. Unfortunately, it does not screenshot well. It's a very dynamic, moving, interactive thing. So I'm going to repeat myself again. Please go to the website and check it out, because it is super awesome to scroll through and see how you can go through each of these topics and look at the dynamic-changing maps and all of the cool information that you can scroll through on this story map. And then the next document that we put out was the vision and guiding principles, which you have in front of you. And the vision and, vision and guiding principles is really the culmination of everything that we have heard from the community so far. It will be the foundation of the general plan and all of the policy that we write for it. So the vision statement for Bakersfield that we got, from everything that we heard the community talking about, is that Bakersfield is a resilient and diverse city that cultivates collaboration in order to provide the highest quality of life for its people. We celebrate our diversity and enjoy a deep sense of community that is fostered through safe and affordable neighborhoods, plentiful parks, and vibrant cultural centers. Natural systems, working lands, and urban life blend together for a thriving economy where high-quality goods and services are accessible through multimodal means, and active lifestyles are supported by urban greenery, clean air, and transformable planning. Under that vision statement, we have guiding principles. And we will be tying the policies that we create in the general plan back to these guiding principles. And you've got, you can see in the document before you that each of the guiding principles has a blurb under it to really flesh out what each of these means. Sustainable living, economic vitality, equitable access to quality services and infrastructure, embracing community diversity and identity, purposeful and cohesive planning, health, safety, and quality of life. And again, reiterating, this is, this is us. We distilled down all of what we heard from the community into these, these values. And I, I also want to take a minute to just note, and this was not on purpose. We did not look at the council goals when we wrote these guiding principles. It was pointed out afterward. How these line up very neatly with the council goals. Health, safety, and quality of life, sustainable living, with enhanced quality of life in public amenities, and economic vitality with strengthen and diversify our economic base. And equitable access to quality services and infrastructure to enhance infrastructure, embracing community diversity and identity, promote community pride, image, and excellent customer service, and purposeful and cohesive planning with invest in urban renewal and downtown development. So to me, this really kind of spoke to the fact that people in Bakersfield not only really care a lot about their community, but there are, at the core, some really aligned values in this. And I think that's really powerful, moving forward with this project and this effort as we get into doing the land use alternatives and creating the policies that will guide the city moving forward. So the next phases are exactly that. We're going to be evaluating all of the different options for land use opportunities. I'm sure you've all been following the housing element. We've now got a more solid idea of where the opportunities are for housing in the city. And so we can start looking at how to integrate that into the larger landscape of Bakersfield more holistically. And where else to look? There's been a lot of, a lot of focus on housing, but what else? And there will be a lot of engagement around that and a lot of city direction. We'll be having workshops in the late summer. And of course, those options will be evaluated by you as the council, and the preferred alternative will be chosen by you. And then, once that is done, once we have an idea of what the land use alternatives, the land use alternative is going to be, we can look at how to get there through policy. So we'll be vetting, taking those large topics, the topics of the required general plan, and looking at what are the significant issues and concerns that Bakersfield has, and how do we solve those through policy, vetting all of those different ideas. We're going to have a whole series of workshops around that, and it will be heavily influenced by city and council in. So just summarizing again, for engagement specifically, we have pop-up booths planned, more pop-ups. Four of those will be led by the consultant team. Staff is already on a tear. They've got four already planned that they've signed up for. They're on the screen. So at least four are city staff-led. And then we've got more workshops planned for the land use alternatives and a series of them for policy workshops later in the summer and fall. Those are not scheduled yet, so more to come on those. And I want to really thank you, the opportunity to work with your amazing team on this project. And I hope you're just as excited about the next phases as I am.
Thank you, Ms. Acosta. Mr. Clegg, do you wish to make any closing comments?
No, Mayor. We're open to any questions or comments from the council.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I have just a couple of
I have just a couple of questions, one related to the process and then another related to the actual outcome and the product. I want to turn back to page 16 if we can, and looking at your engagement goals. You know, we have over 408,000 people, residents living in Bakersfield. What is the engagement objective?
That is a very large question.
How many people are we trying to engage?
As many as we possibly can. I would say we don't have a metric set, if that's what you're asking.
That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
If I could. There isn't a set metric. I think staff started with a bit of a lurch and saw that some of the strategies that we were going to employ weren't bringing the best results, especially as it related to the investment staff was making in those projects. But I think we've just really caught our stride. Ms. Costa noted our surveys, our second survey, which was a Think Big survey, touched 1 in 500 residents in the community, which I would call a very deep dive into understanding what was important in the community. We see that as one accomplishment, but we also see it as one of many as we move forward in the next phase in our public outreach. I see public outreach as the key piece in understanding what the city wants to be in 2045. And so every opportunity we can engage the public, that's exactly what we're doing.
Okay. I'd like to see how many people we've engaged so far and for us to establish an engagement goal that we can reach towards, and then also to utilize this body. The seven of us are elected by our wards, by the people of Bakersfield, and I think that we are in a good position, a strong position, to actually help with that engagement. And so I don't want to necessarily assign that directly to our consultants or to our staff, but also just recognize that that's a responsibility for all of us as we pursue this initiative. The other thing related to engagement, I would like to see intermittently how we're engaging people of color, Latinos, our Black community, our Punjabi community, also a breakdown of residents by zip code so that we're being very intentional about engaging people in our disadvantaged neighborhoods who often don't ordinarily have opportunities to engage in a meaningful way. And that may take more effort than perhaps going to, you know, community meetings or perhaps having a workshop. And so I'd like us to think about creative ways that we can engage those populations.
That's certainly something we can do. In terms of some of the data asks, I don't know whether we've asked those specific questions in all of our outreach. I can say that based on the map that's been provided to you, we've made a point of going throughout all the neighborhoods in the community, and we'll continue to do so, but per your direction, we'll look for some more ethnic data moving forward.
I would really appreciate that. And then my second question is related to the actual product, right? So and really, when is it that this body will have a chance to inform or engage or at least provide some feedback on some of the land use alternatives and policy approaches that will be in the general plan? I don't want us to get too far down the road where the cake is already in the oven and we don't get to provide some of our input. So can you walk us through very specifically, when are those moments where this council will have an opportunity to really take some deep dives and to provide some meaningful feedback before the document is crafted?
I can only speak to the immediacy of what we're doing right here and now in terms of the council beginning to see some of the efforts come across your dais. Right now, our staff has been almost solely focused on the housing element. We're not built to do five things at once, but that's what we're doing, five things at once. And so consequently, one of our primary goals is to get across the finish line with the housing element. That happens in December of this year. We're already working towards stakeholder meetings on the zoning ordinance component of that, and the Planning and Development Committee will have a touch point with the zoning ordinance component of the housing element update in April. They'll have subsequently additional touch points in May with that piece of the puzzle. Your housing element goes to public release draft here in less than 30 days, and we'll begin a series of public hearings towards formal adoption in December of this year. Once we're through that component, the housing element component, then we'll pivot on to strategies to engage the city council and begin the hard work of assembling the general plan itself.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Boyle. And I was just going to, and I think there is good merit to focusing on the housing element, and it involves many of the topics that have been discussed at the Housing and Homelessness Committee, as well as the Planning and Development Committee. And so there are specific touch points in the next few months on the housing element piece. But I would just point back to one of the slides we saw in this presentation, that workshops on the land use alternative and the policy proposals, the land use alternative, if I'm recalling correct, looks like, you know, late summer, there's going to be workshops, including a council workshop specifically on the land use alternative, to follow the policy choices, another workshop with council on the policy choices.
So we will have ample time and intentional moments, scheduled opportunities for us to engage and help craft each element of this plan. I just want to make sure that-
Short answer, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Approximately outside of the surveys, the 200 surveys, approximately how many residents have been engaged, unduplicated? Just ballpark?
I think unduplicated. I'm doing my math here. 2,000? 2,000? That probably is in the ballpark. We got better in terms of our public outreach in attendance, in person and online. And so we had, the last one we did was, in person, was in the southeast quadrant of the city, and there was very good participation by the residents who lived in that area of the city. And I think that we're going to build on our strengths and understand where we were successful, where we weren't, and capitalize on the successes.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering, you had the focus groups. Is there a summary of the feedback from them that we could see from each group? I think that would be helpful.
The website, if you choose to visit the website, you can, all of the materials for every touch point we've had are available there. I'm not sure whether the briefings as it relates to the comments that we received are there, but I'm thinking we're not violating anybody's trust in perhaps putting those summary documents associated with those outreach events.
We generally don't post the stakeholder VBOs online because they-
Yeah, I don't care about anybody's name. I just want to, you know, if you, the Economic Development Group had these statements, the Housing Group had these, Affordable Housing Developers had these statements.
Right. And even if we don't post them online, we can still provide the summary memo.
That would be great. Thank you. Housing, we're going to have discussions continuously over the next few months, I think is what I heard.
Very shortly and over and over again, yes.
Circulation element seems to me to be the other big one. Does that come in front of us separately, or how do we input on that?
I would say this, because we've been having internal conversations about how to do this best. I've had dialogue with the Public Works Director. We've begun to vet the best approaches. I appreciate the feedback. It's kind of helping me begin to formulate best practices with my council in terms of engagement. So we can do this in many different ways. Our contract is scoped to provide for many touch points with the city council. I think I'm not really prepared to give you specifics right now, but I can and will in the near future.
Thank you. I just, you know, I want to reiterate, when we went through the traffic calming, Councilmember Freeman had great comments, you know, everybody's got ideas on circulation, how the streets should look, and the environment is built largely from streets and housing. Those, to me, seem to be the two major things.
And staff is not ignoring those comments as they occur.
Appreciate that. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Kudos to you, Chris, and our consultant. Thank you so much for the work that you are doing. I know that there are significant vacancies, specifically in our Development Services Department, and we are learning to do more with less. And so I just want to say thank you for doing that. And I've seen your staff, you know, and probably the consultant staff at many different community organizations, or community events and meetings, and really engaging, I think genuinely, with a lot of the residents there in the community. And I've seen it happening for, I think, more than a year now. So I just want to, you know, tip my cap off to you and the team, and please extend that, you know, sense of gratitude to them. I know that we're still, we've still got some work to do, but I think that's a really good sign. I also want to commend whoever put this presentation slide together. This vision statement is incredible and frankly accomplishes something that we could not accomplish in over a year through visioning workshops. This is fantastic, and I think really captures the city of Bakersfield and our vision and goals and what we want to see in our community. So, well done. I did have one particular question, though. This is the first time that I'm seeing air pollution as a component of the general plan. Is that something that was a component of the plan when we put it together back in 2002, or is that something new?
It's not required for all areas of the state, but it is for a requirement of the Southern San Joaquin Valley that we address air quality. It doesn't need to be a standalone element, but we need to address it within the general plan.
Okay. And I don't want us to take too deep of a dive. I know that there will be opportunities down the road for us to discuss this further, but, you know, really high level, how are other cities tackling this same component? You know, I guess the better question is, what role does the city play in addressing the concerns of air pollution?
I don't want to put my consultant on the hot seat, but, because I'm not certain what other cities are doing. Candidly, I'm not certain what the city of Bakersfield is going to create in terms of goals and policies which help address air quality in the city. I would note that today's AQI index was 28, and we'd like to see that happen more and more.
Okay. Thank you so much. Looking forward to future conversations about that.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. I wanted to thank staff as well as our consultants for working on this document. Anything planning-related really gets me excited, so just wanted to say how important a general plan is to a city. The first-ever general plan was created in the city of Cleveland, Ohio in 1903, and it really does become the central policy document of any city. And I'm so happy to see some of these statistics that you've also provided to paint a picture of the Bakersfield that we see and know now and where it's going. The font's a little small, but 63% of Bakersfield residents were younger than 40 years old in 2019. More than 50% of Bakersfield population identifies as Hispanic or Latino. From 2000 to 2020, Bakersfield's population grew 49%, and by 2040, Bakersfield is expected to grow to 705%, I think is what it says. And there's a few more statistics, but I think that's so important to frame the conversation that we're having about our general plan. I had a few questions around engagement and maybe some suggestions as I was thinking about our process, as well as some of the processes I've read that are happening in other cities. I know we're doing a lot of collaboration between departments. Is there an option to also offer, you know, the different surveys or workshops happening to also giving, opening that option to our city employees, since they kind of are both at the intersection of working within the city and being residents? I feel like their input would be valuable.
There's been no exclusion of city employees from practicing in the surveys that we've held. I think that we'll have additional surveys as part of our online outreach and as well as with our pop-ups. You know, today you can take a survey on your smartphone, just take the QR code, and while you're having a dialogue with staff, you're taking a survey at the same time. And so there's many touch points occurring almost simultaneously. It's an engaging approach. So, yes, we see an opportunity to take feedback from our employees because, quite frankly, they're citizens of the city of Bakersfield and those people we want to hear from.
And there have been intentional invitations to our employees to participate, and Chris is a great ambassador, along with his team. We're always hearing about RISE in our meetings.
If the city council would like a complimentary pin, I'd be happy to provide them in the next meeting, or perhaps one of our award-winning T-shirts from our T-shirt contest, courtesy of KBAK. Yes, we like to get into the community and have some fun. It is a long marathon of an effort, and we want to continue to keep momentum with the community so it doesn't become a dry topic. We want it to keep it fresh. We want to keep people engaged.
I, speaking for myself and maybe my colleagues, I think we'd love a pin and a T-shirt. I saw a pin being stolen earlier from an assistant manager, but-
Swag bag coming up.
Great. And I wanted to also thank the options for having, for it being multilingual. I know personally that folks took it in multiple languages, so that was a great addition. My other suggestion was, since, you know, our statistics are showing how young our populations are, I think this would be a great opportunity to utilize our city social media, especially like an Instagram story where folks can really just click through and post options or preferences right then and there. It might be an easy way to catch a lot of responses, and I'll be sure to fill it out again as well. But I also wanted to echo what Councilmember Bob Smith said in having a summary of how representative those responses are. If we can, is it possible to get where we collected those responses from, like events slash zip codes? How representative can we really see that kind of response, I guess, summary be?
I would say that the zip code that's been noted a couple of times as part of dialogue is something we can add to a survey. We can have a dropdown menu of, dropdown menu of the various zip codes of the city, and our respondents can select the zip code that they reside within. And that helps us break down the areas where the various respondents are coming from. And that just adds to the data set. We don't go into the various wards of the city on accident. They're distributed throughout the city, and so although we may not be thinking, oh, this location is in Ward 2, what we are thinking is, we haven't had real touch points here, there, or someplace else. And so we're looking to kind of fill in the gaps of the city and make sure that we have opportunities for all the citizens to see us and participate in the process. My personal perspective is that outreach is the most important component of the general plan. You don't really know what your resident really wants to see their city to be like in the next 25 years until you ask them. And so a lot of our questions have been focused on, you know, what's important to you? What's important to you now? What are the topics that are important to you in the future? Where do you see the city of Bakersfield being in 2045? Where are the holes in our game? And from that, we've got a, what I liked most about the vision statement is that it really did, we didn't ask the citizenry whether they'd seen the council goals, but what we got- But what we got from your constituents is that their goals for the future very much so align with the council's goals for the future. And that was, that was, for me, in terms of outreach, that was an exciting moment because we've done a really great job of getting out there. I mean, I'd love to have had 4,000 or more people. You know, how we engage is different today. We've had to adapt to it. But what we've come away with is a sense of confidence that my council very well represents their constituents in every way. And that's exciting. That's good government.
Thank you. For the summary data, I think my question was, can you also include where the data was included, was collected that we had requested? Can that be added, just where it was collected? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. This is my second time, so I'll make it quick. I agree with my colleagues. I think that there needs to be goals when it comes to community engagement. I think we need to, you know, figure out how we're going to measure by community, by demographic, to make sure that everybody is proportionally represented in the data. Although I will push back, I think that, you know, measuring it by zip code might actually misconstrue the data simply because some zip codes are much larger than others, both geographically but then also by population. And so I just wanted to mention that. I think there's opportunities, you know, to do it either by precinct tract or by wards in general since they are now pretty much equally represented. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. As it relates to outreach, it's, I want to temper, temper some of the statements in that I can't force people to participate. That's one of my first observations. We have gone into every quadrant of the city, and there are quadrants of the city that aren't really excited about participating in their local government. And consequently, that's a real frustration when you've done a tremendous amount of work standing up a workshop with the expectation of people being participative. So I want to temper that. We'll continue to keep on trying. We keep our chin up. I also wanted to dogleg back to the question on air quality. Maybe I'm a little slow at this time of night, but the reality is, it's an interesting question because so much, the air moves and Bakersfield doesn't, and much of our problems don't originate in the city. So focus is going to be on what we can do to reduce, reduce or improve air quality as a city. We can't be asking other municipalities in the Bay Area whose winds might be blowing our way to improve our air quality. We'll take approaches that resonate with our city and how we might be able to best begin to bring air quality improvements to the community.
If I may, I also just wanted to provide a couple of thoughts. I mean, we're very keen to, you know, do lots of really good outreach. And actually, I have made some observations to this council that, you know, the city as an organization has not historically had the resources and been especially practiced at doing lots of community outreach, to just be candid. We are increasing our capacity to do that. We're training our employees to have the skill sets to do that and actually getting some tools like software or systems to help us do that. But our muscles aren't at full capacity around data collection and community engagement. An activity like the general plan is one of the most important, and so that's why we've actually enlisted the consultant help to help us with outreach and the measurement. And I would say our general plan thus far has been one of the best outreach projects that I have seen since I've come to the city, and so we're doing good work in the space. I just did want to reflect that we'll do our best to collect as much meaningful data. I think the council's asked some really good questions to help us think about what are we collecting and what questions are we asking and what systems we're using to collect that data. But we're still, you know, using some rudimentary tools, and there will be a balance between, you know, Chris's team pushing forward these five major policy documents and how much outreach we can do in each one of those. We'll try and balance that with how much data and outreach we see having a really high return on investment. If we see that it would take a really big investment to chase down the last two metrics, then we might say, hey, this is probably our recommendation as staff where we've reached a good place that gets a pretty good picture. We may not be able to gather the perfect picture, but lots of good questions to help us think about how to collect data. But I think we will have some limitations in that, and we'll have to balance that with the work capacity to make it right. But again, general plan is a big one, and we're going to make sure we get it right.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. We need a motion to receive and file.
Motion to receive and file.
You have a motion? Please cash your votes. Thank you, Mr. Costa.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item, please.
Council and Mayor's Statements.
Councilmember Smith.
I just want to comment on all the great water that's been falling from the heavens recently and compliment our city water department on how they are working with all the other water districts in Kern County to manage that water, to keep that water in Kern County, and to protect the community from floods. There's a lot of moving with a lot of water, and we're appreciative, but it also takes a lot of forethought and work, and they're doing a great job. And if you get a chance, get out and look at it. It's great.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gray.
Yes, I just wanted to recognize what people, some people are doing right in the city. When we started the whole Park Ranger program, you know, it's no secret that I was a bit skeptical of it, didn't know how that was going to work, how our taxpayer dollars were being spent, if it was going to be in good investment or not. We're still young in the program, and I'm expecting more good news to come out. But one of my constituents wrote this to me yesterday, and I thought it was important to share so that we can recognize what people are doing right. Says, "Good afternoon, Councilmember Gray. I just wanted to let you know that things at Centennial Park continue to improve. I just spoke with Rangers Sandoval and Torres, and they were professional, friendly, personable, and genuinely concerned with the welfare of the park and our neighborhood. I wanted them to know how much we appreciate their presence and wanted you to know that they're doing an excellent job. Thank you so much again for everything." Joanne Bender. So I just thought I wanted to share that and thank the Park Rangers that we're seeing some good results from the program, and I'm happy to hear that. So, good job.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. We've discussed the topic before, but vacant properties, both commercial and residential properties, have continued to be a problem in the urban core of Bakersfield. And I continue to press both staff and this council to address the issue through additional ordinances. And I just wanted to provide for the council and for staff tonight, a research study from the Federal Reserve Bank of Atlanta, which outlines the effectiveness of a vacant property registration ordinance that they've studied, ordinances similar to what we've proposed in Florida, and they've found it to be effective. Also created a list of all of the cities and counties in the state of California that has a vacant property registration. There's over 100 cities on this list, and so I wanted to provide that to my colleagues tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other requests, and so we stand adjourned at 8 o'clock.